United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please take your seats. Tonight is a special night. And we got a few things to get through, but the first thing we're gonna do tonight is, this is the best part of this job. So, we have a proclamation for an employee from the village board, and I'm gonna read it. Actually, I can't until I open the meeting. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to open the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So here is the proclamation from the village board. So whereas Daniel Demetrov began his employment with the Village of Cornwall and Hudson New York Water Department on Monday, April 24th, 2023, following a duty assignment with the City of Newburgh Water Department. Born in Stipe, Macedonia, in what was then the post-World War II former nation known as the Socialist Federal Republic of Yugoslavia, a country in Southeast and Central Europe that existed between 1918 and 1992. Daniel completed his scholastic endeavors and attended a technical school with training in the bakery realm. While he eventually found available work in Stipe, in his late teens, he embarked on a journey that found him preparing pizzas along the coastline throughout the tourist season, mostly in Montenegro and Croatia. Is there in Montenegro, in a beautiful town known as Kotor? Kotor, that Daniel met the love of his life, his wife Alexandra, while she was in graduate school. And whereas across two summers, while the new couple dated and Daniel futilely attempted to secure a US visa, they elected to travel across Europe as Alexandra worked on her thesis. When she was offered a solid job opportunity, and while she possessed US citizenship, the couple applied for a K-1 visa, which is also known as a fiance visa, for Daniel. While it took almost a year to receive the necessary approvals through the US State Department, once awarded, the young couple had but four months to relocate to the United States and get married. They handled it with aplomb and settled in Connecticut, the nutmeg state, where they resided between 2013 and 2015. When Alexandra was offered another job opportunity, they relocated to Newburgh, New York. And whereas Daniel was awarded permanent residency status once they were married, the couple had their beautiful daughter Claire, right there in the front row. Hi Claire. Everybody looks at me like that. In 2020, and then set out to secure Daniel's US citizenship. Across several years, they worked diligently to follow all applicable laws and approved, I'm sorry, and processes, while nervously awaiting confirmation that the application had been accepted and approved. During the ensuing months and years, required attendances at a multitude of scheduled appointments and payment of necessary fees, the young family continued to optimistically await notification of his scheduled civics and English exams. He studied dutifully, and then he was offered a date to be sworn in, and his official swearing-in ceremony took place in Albany, New York on February 20th of 2025. So now therefore, be it resolved, that by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, New York, and on behalf of this duly-elected village board, and on the joyous occasion that welcomes one of our stalwart village employees into the ranks of official citizen of the United States, I do hereby proclaim today, Monday, March 24th, 2025, Demetrov Family Day in the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, New York. Congratulations. Come down and give you this. It's all right here, so hold it like this.
You can get the wife and the family in the picture. Had to get that family in that picture.
It's Demetrov Family Day.
Where's Claire? How old is Claire now?
I'm not sure.
Five, all right. I thought it, I thought Daniel and Alexandra, I thought it was fitting today since we are a nation of immigrants, and, you know, since I'm Italian and Irish, I wear my Irish tie and my Italian and Irish pin here. I normally wear the US flag, but welcome. We appreciate the fact that you guys wanted to be here so badly and you worked so hard to do it, and you did all the things, and I can imagine the civics classes and the English classes and all that, but we appreciate having you here and congratulations. This is truly a great day again.
Thank you so much.
All right? All right, so I'm gonna make an advisement here unless you guys, and I know the guys back there don't want to, unless you wanna stick around for Route Canal with No Novocane, this would be a great time because we're gonna get into the board meeting stuff, and if you guys wanna go, you can, or if you wanna stick around and see the process, you're welcome to do that too. All right? All right, congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
Says a lot that your entire department is here to see you. That says a lot. Congratulations. You got it. All right?
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. You got it.
What's this now?
And, boy, the place cleared up pretty quickly, didn't it? I do, I do. And, and credit goes to Superintendent Trainer, who I know went up to Albany for the swearing-in ceremony, and also brought it to my attention and requested the proclamation, which I thought was a, was a fitting recognition of Daniel and his family. So, okay, that's that. Next thing I'm gonna do, it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to congratulate three of my colleagues up here. The mayor-elect, James P. Kane, who last Tuesday, on March 18th, won the election for mayor, and the two trustees, David Carnwright and Bill Brain, who won the two seats for, for trustees. So, they'll get sworn in on April 7th, but I just wanna say a congratulations to our three colleagues on the board for winning their elections and agreeing to serve for another two years on this village board. So, so thank you, guys. All right, next item is public comment. Any, I don't see anybody here from the public, so anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Monthly department reports. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the February 24th, 2025, and the March 10th, 2025 village board minutes, because I do not believe anybody missed those meetings. Am I correct? I think so. So, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to monthly department reports. The treasurer report, February monthly water report, the village, $140,688.06. The town, $246,372.05, for a total of $387,060.11. Warrant number two in the amount, which also includes prepaid, in the amount of $384,340.79, with monthly revenues and expenditures reports by funds as follows. The general fund revenues, $4,545,788.73. Expenditures of $5,507,369.97. Water fund revenues in the amount of $4,305,887.51, with expenditures of $2,966,154.55. Sewer funds revenue, $456,723.47, expenditures of $309,599.69. Total receipts, $9,416,208.24, or 107.3527% in anticipated revenues, with $8,858,71.71, or 100.9895% in anticipated expenditures through February. The balance collective for sewer capital is $686,600, I'm sorry, $686,560.58 through the month of February 2025. Notes from the treasurer, night class interest year-to-date of invested village monies as of February 28, 2025, $5,702.72. All right, moving on to the building department, trustee Carnwright.
Okay, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department, report for February 2025. Building permits issued seven. Certificate of Compliance Occupancy issued three. On-site inspections, 13. Violation zero. Stop-work orders, zero. Municipal searches, two. Solar panels, zero. Fire inspections, six. Manny Carmona, code enforcement.
All right, any questions, or actually Manny, anything you wanna add before there's questions from the board?
Three things, sir. One, they had trouble three reports, police stay was filed. Those, depending on that.
Well done, you do that every year, you get it in on time, and it's never been kicked back yet, so I guess they're happy with what you do.
We're doing well there. The other report that was also submitted was the 2024 census report for construction. So that's also something that had to be done annually. So we're good as well there. And you will be receiving a unsafe building report. It's what council right now reviewing it. Once he's agreed, that it's good to submit to you, it will be submitted, hopefully tonight.
Okay. How are the, how are the fire inspections going now, Manny? I know you had quite a few, and I know you're trying to catch up. How are those going?
They're going very well. The goal is to get them all done this year, commercial and residential, and right now we on track for that.
What's the total amount that we have that you have to deal?
Part of that, doing it all this year, is to get that complete inventory that we don't have, only going by, you know, what we've been having in the record. I'm sure there's quite a few that we have missed in the, in the past years. But part of that, I'm doing a, an inventory as I go.
Yeah, all right.
To get them all done. I will give you that report by the end of the year, you have an exact total of what we have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the building inspector? All right, moving on to fire department, trustee Paleota.
February 2025 department report. Apparatus station maintenance, two. Automatic alarm, six. Carbon monoxide condition, condition, two. Culinary mishaps, two. Drills, three. EMS calls, four. Meetings, two. Motor vehicle accidents, one. Training, two. Work details, three. Total volunteer hours, 205.4. Total events, 27. We have reviewed a draft specification from Seagrave for mounting a refurbished aerial scope tower ladder on a new cab and chassis. We removed several items from the specification to lower the purchase price and make the apparatus more serviceable in the future. Thank you to firefighter Matt Wilhelm, who has spent a lot of time replacing the stairs to the basement of the firehouse. He is also building a bailout prop so firefighters can drill and demonstrate proficiency with their bailout systems. Firefighter John Ortiz, certified as a driver on Rescue 417. Firefighter Steve Calamari continues his training with the Orange County arson task force. Firefighter Lena Yang has taken confined space awareness training.
All right, any questions for our fire chief or for our fire commissioner from the board? Or actually, chief, and Mr. Chair, any, anything to add?
Just one thing, we're, we're a step closer with our replacement engine. We did get it back from Firematic last week, so we gotta get our equipment on it. Some radios, some lettering, and hopefully the next month or so we'll be ready to go.
Love it. Charlie, one question, where do we, where do we stand with the insurance carrier on the, on the accident vehicle? Were they supposed to get back to us, or?
We had a consultant.
We hired the consultant, yeah. We, we got an estimate back from the consultant, it was somewhere around $445,000. I'm probably off on that number. You know, now it's up to the board where you would like to settle with the insurance company.
And we just, I know that there was correspondence we just received from the insurance company at or around the same time that we received the, finally received the estimate. So we were looking to schedule a meeting or a call to discuss it, so we'll have to get the estimate to the insurance company and go from there.
So the additional scrutiny has resulted in a higher estimate of the lost value, right?
Our side, yeah, our estimate was higher, yeah.
Roughly, roughly double.
Which is what you assumed. You assumed it was gonna be more. Then the insurance company has to approve that amount.
Well, now it'll be a negotiation.
Right.
Yeah, so they, they have their estimate, we have ours. Our pitch to the insurance company is that their estimate's undervalued and we should get more.
Charlie, and I'm assuming you looked at it just in general, was the consult, were there a lot of things that were missing from the insurance's side of the house in regards to their analysis, their assessment as opposed to the, because it's such, it, it sounds like it probably is, only because the, the numbers are, are large.
Not that there were things missing, but more expensive.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, moving on to the police department. Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, so the monthly report for February 2025. With respect to felonies, we had one felony criminal mischief for misdemeanors and violations. We had one for fraud, one for criminal mischief, and one for harassment, aggravated harassment. As to arrests, none. And as for vehicle and traffic, there was response to one personal injury accident, four property damage accidents, 10 traffic summonses were issued, three traffic warnings issued, four parking summonings, summonses were issued, seven traffic enforcement posts, and two speed slash radar sign postings. As for non-criminal activity, there's one domestic incident and five alarm response calls. And lastly, with respect to departmental assist, there were five to the attack, to the Town of Cornwall PD, eight to EMS, one to other police agencies, one welfare check, and one assist citizen. And that's it. Anything, chief, to point out?
Yeah, Officer Bunt completed his police refresher course, so he's all done with that. Also, this Sunday, March 30th, both Officer Thompson and I are gonna be going to the Village of Chester. There's a Make-A-Wish event that's taking place there for a six-year-old girl that's gravely ill, and she loves law enforcement, so numerous departments throughout the county are gonna participate and do a formal lineup for this young lady as a surprise.
Where, where is it, when is this?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be in the Village of Chester at the Stop &amp; Shop. Stop &amp; Shop is actually the one that's sponsoring it, but the chief in the Village of Chester actually reached out to all the PDs, so both Officer Thompson and I are gonna go to the event at nine o'clock.
Very nice.
Very good. Thank you, thank you for doing that.
All right, any other questions for the chief? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the Department of Public Works before trustee Paleota gives her, gives the department's report. Dave, in regards to our conversation, Joe, you're gonna handle that issue with the DPW superintendent regarding the pilings and the concerns from the yacht club. The Cornwall Yacht Club normally gratis takes care of helping us pound in the pilings. This year was especially bad for our pilings as far as uprooting them. We don't always lose as many as we did this year. The DPW superintendent had to go out and purchase new pilings. The yacht club, I don't wanna say a new policy, but their, their attorney has encouraged them to, if the equipment that's going to leave their property and go to village property and be operated by yacht club members, that the village needs to indemnify them. Joe will work with our DPW superintendent and ensure that happens. We need to do that. Dave, obviously weather dependent, but you wanna get those in as soon as opposed to later, correct?
They're gonna start with the strippers running.
How soon is the stripper run coming?
Early April.
Peak is Mother's Day.
Yeah, okay, all right, so you guys will work on that and then let us know. Okay, good enough. All right, trustee Paleota?
Department of Public Works, February 2025. Trash collect for the month, 81.6 tons. Recycling collected for the month, 24.8 tons. Yard waste collected for the month, we don't have that number. Routine maintenance performed on vehicle, Village vehicles, repairs and maintenance of street sweeper, preparing for season, pre-treating of roads for ice and snowstorms. Plowing roads and clearing sidewalks, snow removal from parking areas and lots, street sign repairs. Yearly tonnage reports completed for county and the DEC, electronic recycling. Notes, spring bulk pickup will be, will be the week of April 28th. This winter, the ice on Hudson River has wiped out five of the pilings on the boat docks at the riverfront park. We will have to have them replaced as soon as we can. David Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
All right, David, anything to add?
Pretty much covered last month.
Yeah, any questions from the board for the DPW superintendent? Seeing none, we'll move on to the water department, trustee Carnwright.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department for February 2025. Monthly production, 22,131,000 gallons. Daily average, 790,000 gallons. We collected 25 samples in accordance with the DOH regulations. Treatment, routine operations and maintenance, transmission and distribution. Forty utility markouts were completed, completed four water service shut-offs, turn-ons at owner's request. Water main leak repaired, Chedane Drive. Fire hydrant repaired and installed, Grandview Avenue and Boulevard. Service line leak repaired, Shore Road, Town of Cornwall Sewer Plant. Curved valve boxes repaired, 28 Maple, 49 Duncan Avenue, and 12 Second Street. Completed snow removal from five fire hydrants. Continued leak detection throughout the distribution system. Meters, read all commercial water meters. Three final water meter readings were completed. Six residential water meters were replaced. Three miscellaneous repairs were completed. Six water line inspections were completed. Property maintenance, new entry doors installed at Maple Road Pump Station. Repaired heater on Jackson Avenue Water Treatment Plant. Notes, requesting authorization to, to new gravely zero turn mower with bagger. Requesting authorization to allow Joe McCormick and Lou Delacruz to attend Grade D Water Operations School. Respectfully, Michael P. Trainer, Water Superintendent.
Chief, anything to add?
I'll just note that we're gonna begin fire hydrant flushing April 7th, I believe. We'll start in the town. Our annual water quality report will be issued in, in April as well. And just to let everybody know, price of our supplies are going up due to the new tariffs that are being put in place. So some of our manufacturers are adding that line to their, their invoices. Should that change, then they'll remove it.
Is this on things like aluminum?
It's on water meters. You know, we, we try and buy everything American-made where we can, but the, the water meters, we just can't.
Got it, okay. Where do we get those from, Canada?
Um, it's a lot of electronics now, so you can imagine where it comes from.
Yep, got it.
Used to come from here.
Okay, any questions for the water superintendent? None? All right, I'm gonna do a flip-flop, I'm gonna ask trustee Brain to take care of the New Windsor Cornwall EMS report.
All right. The New Windsor EMS report of February 2025, operational statistics, there were 348 calls for service. It was the slowest month in 14 months, a decrease from January of one, by 100 calls. 250 patients transported, 66% of the calls. 100% coverage of calls in our primary response areas, no vehicle accidents, all vehicles are in service, and number of calls per jurisdiction, relevant ones for us, are 90 in Cornwall, 11 on Cornwall and Hudson, as compared to 242 in New Windsor and varying amounts for other municipalities that are mutual aid. Response times, New Windsor, seven minutes and seven seconds. Cornwall, six minutes and 13 seconds. Cornwall and Hudson, six minutes and 28 seconds. On personnel and education, five new volunteer EMTs. And the chief says, I would like to do a press release regarding this. This is the most new volunteers, volunteer EMTs we've had in many years. One staff member injury to receive workers' compensation, one paramedic resignation to become a career firefighter, one new paramedic, Nick Seymour, who started as a volunteer, was trained internally to become a paid EMT and is now a paid paramedic. One employee termination, there was an incident apparently at New Windsor Station, and Supervisor Padetti was informed of that. Four EMT and paramedics were recertified. New Windsor EMS is now a training center with DCC. We can now teach many classes such as CPR and advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support, and many more. We've already held four classes in February. All local agencies have been advised, we can now teach these classes at cost. Administrative notes, full New York State DOH EMS agency inspection was held, no issues or concerns identified. They checked the vehicles, files, narcotics, and policies, with no violations found. Assemblyman Ikis's office was able to send the grant paperwork from last year, which apparently helps move the ball forward on the money that they are expecting. And they say, we appreciate the members of each municipality for reaching out to his office to get this situation resolved. The New Windsor EMS board has reviewed and will be updating their bylaws with consultation from their lawyer. The independent living partnership is slowly moving forward. They performed their first response with us to a patient in need of in-home services in Cornwall last week. They're still working on a scope of work with them and are setting up a meeting with other agencies who have similar response teams to collaborate on best practices. The New Windsor Fund Drive will be sent out in March. Local New Windsor residents provided a large donation that was used to replace furniture for the staff lounge. New FTOs were selected to increase education and quality assurance. Over 100 coats were donated in conjunction with the New Windsor Fire Department, New Windsor Police Department, Village, Vales Gate Fire Department, I'm not gonna get them all, Vales Gate Fire Department, Cornwall PD, the COH PD, Washingtonville Fire Department, Storm King Engine Company, and Cornwall Fire Department with, with their yearly coat drive. These items were sent to Orange County Office of Emergency Management to be donated to local victims of disasters. A generator failure occurred during local power outage at the New Windsor Station. Gentec will be repairing the unit and will let us know when the weekly check is being done, so they can verify it's working. And he wishes everyone a great week, and as always, feel free to reach out with any questions. Michael Bigg, Chief of Operations.
All right. So the chief is not here?
I would imagine that the decrease in calls is, got to do with losing a jurisdiction. Is that right, Mike?
Yeah, I mean.
He said it's a slow month, maybe it was just, it was snowy. Maybe there was a lot less people moving around and getting in trouble.
Same thing with police calls, they always tick up in the summertime when it's nicer and people outside and it's hot, so I'm guessing that's gonna be seasonal or cyclical. All right, moving on to resolutions. The first one, last month, we had Nicole, what was her last name?
Alkstein.
Alkstein, come in and from the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council and give us a great pitch on what we're gonna be doing and what we're, how we're gonna link together with the town on this. Trustee Paleota gamely stuck her hand up and said that she would be the board's liaison to this effort, so we're gonna pass a resolution right now regarding climate smart communities and making a pledge from the village to be a part of this, so that we will be eligible for additional grant monies, and it's just a good thing to do. And as Nicole pointed out, last month, we're over halfway there. We've done a lot of the things that, you know, are part of this, so.
Just point of whatever, information?
Yeah.
We passed this in 2020.
Yeah, I know. I don't, I don't, I don't know why it was asked, I mean, my understanding was that we needed to pass it again. I mean, that's.
This is what ended us, yeah, I mean, this is where we ended up in the database as a registered.
Right.
So I, yeah. Yeah, I guess it can't hurt to reaffirm our commitment to this resolution.
And so what I'll do is, is I'll, I'll enter it, you know, I'll enter the document, I'll just read the last line, which states that it is hereby resolved, the Village of Cornwall Hudson, in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to a changing climate, adopts the New York State Climate Smart Communities pledge, which comprises the following 10 elements. Number one, pledge to be or to remain a climate smart community, set goals, inventory missions, plan for climate action. Three, to decrease community energy use. Four, increase community use of renewable energy. Five, realize benefits of recycling and other climate smart solid waste, solid waste management practices. Six, reduce greenhouse gas emissions through the use of climate smart land use tools. Seven, enhance community resilience and prepare for the effects of climate change. Eight, support development of a green innovation economy. Nine, inform and inspire the public. And 10, commit to an evolving process of climate action. So since we did pass this right after I got on the board in 2021, I believe, was when it was passed, because it was one of the first things, resolutions that I was in, in eye to, I'm gonna make a motion that we reaffirm it, and that's what we'll do. So may I have a second? As per document. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item, election inspector compensation. It's been my opinion, which I believe the board shares, that we have been woefully underpaying our election workers. underpaying our election workers across the years, especially in light of the fact that we added an additional six hours to their tenure here. Our village elections were always 12 to 9:00 PM. The board several, several years ago, I think three years ago or four years ago, changed our election times to 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, which is a very long day, 15 hours if you do the math. And we're still paying, paying people a very small amount. We're going to go with, or I'm going to make a motion that we go with what the county pays its election workers for the same hours to be paid at a rate of 325. The board has already approved the rate, which was, what was it? Two?
200.
Which was 200. So this is not an amendment. It's a resolution stating that we will pay them 325. So I'm going to make a motion. May I have a second?
Okay.
Further discussion? This includes election inspectors and field technicians for the voting machine. And for the election that occurred on March 18th was last Tuesday. So I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now keep in mind, we'll continue to have to do this, or you'll continue to have to do this every election, but that's a rate that we're establishing, so. Okay. Donahue Farm requested events. I played phone tag again with Deek. I tried to get in touch with him to ask him that we were going to go ahead and pass the scheduled events, but we're going to leave out the two events in April that involved heavy machinery, lathing equipment and milling equipment for logs and woodworking until the village board has a chance to better understand what is to be done. And I coordinated with our attorney as well as with our DPW Superintendent, who is the person who maintains the farm for us, to ensure that it's safe. We're going to approve everything else tonight. So I'm going to make a motion and ask the board that accepts the adoption of the scheduled events minus those two early April events until we can get them rescheduled and ensure that we can properly indemnify the folks that are working there and the folks that are participating. So I'm going to ask that we approve the April 26 Community Garden opening, the June 14th Donahue Farm Music Festival, sponsored by the COH Special Events Committee. Multiple days in August for poetry readings from local authors. They're going to be held in the late afternoon. August 16th, movie and trivia night at Donahue Farm with the Cornwall Youth Committee acting as a fundraiser, as well as the COH Special Events Committee. The September 6th and 7th Petting Zoo. What does Two by Two with Animals mean?
That's the company.
Oh, okay. The Two by Two with Animals is the company. September 27th, Community Garden Harvest Dinner. I think they've done that before. They do that in the shed area there. Or actually, they may do it in the barn bill, right? Think they've done it one in each. Done it one in the barn and they did one underneath the shed.
Yeah, I don't know, actually.
The September 27th Community Harvest, Garden Harvest Dinner, the October 4th Movie Night, which is Rocky Horror Picture Show, sponsored by the Cornwall Hudson Special Events Committee. The October 18th, this is our third year, doing the Cornwall Youth Committee's Color Bash, starting at the farm, also sponsored by the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee. I don't know what this is, but I assume it sounds safe. The October 25th Pumpkin Chunkin', and the December 13th Santa on the Farm, between 2:00 PM and 4:00 PM for photographs. So may I get a second?
Second.
Further discussion of just that slate of events for approval?
I would just, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just saying, you didn't mention this one, Jim. I don't know why it's not highlighted.
Yeah, September 21st, Sunday, the Cornwall Fall Festival. That's in the town.
Oh, the Fall Festival. I'm thinking like, oh, what are you having a Fall Festival? Okay, got it, all right.
Yeah, we had looked into doing an Oktoberfest, I think, last year. But yes, the.
All right, understood.
Fall Fest is in the town. So any further discussion? Bill, anything to add?
I think the Pumpkin Chunkin', weren't the ones that are in blue need further?
Yeah, I'd just say, yeah, pending clarification of the details of each event. The Pumpkin Chunkin' is intended to be literally a trebuchet or catapult flinging of pumpkins across the field.
With people catching them.
No catching.
No catching them.
But in any case, so I would just say that we should amend our resolution to say pending full disclosure of all the events. And also just insurance certificate from the animal company as well, which they are fully like protected, bonded, insured. They have all their paperwork, but we just have to see it, right?
I'm assuming that the, that the deconstructed pumpkins will either be used for the food scraps, collections for, you know, compost.
Might just grow wild in the field.
Or just be left for the deer.
Deer might eat them.
Because deer do like pumpkins.
Yeah, and there is some discussion still within the Donahue Committee about the exact nature of Pumpkin Chunkin' and what it might end up as.
Where would we be getting the pumpkins from?
So that is part of the question, which is they're proposing a community pumpkin patch just on the outside of the fence of the community garden with a small electric fence going up, which everybody said, hold on, we're not putting an electric fence at child height around an open field, et cetera, et cetera. So there is still some discussion to be had about how pumpkins are sourced and flung.
All right, with emphasis on how they're flung. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Make that note that those two events involving woodworking are put on pause until we get further details. All right, River Sweep. This happens every year. It's sponsored by the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council. I think I've seen all of the trustees down there. It's a wonderful event. They're asking, they're asking for their special event application to be approved to hold their event, again, sponsored by the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council, on behalf of Riverkeeper, and held at the Donahue Memorial Park on Saturday, May 3rd, 2025. The application is approved contingent on appropriate village regulations to be followed. The village always waives the fee. We don't charge them to rent the shelter or the gazebo, whatever you prefer to call it. And our police.
And we pick up the garbage.
And we pick up the garbage. And once it's separated into recyclables and into garbage, Dave will have a crew there to pick that up. It's a great event. It gets, appears to get bigger and bigger every year. And the chief makes sure that whoever's on duty, we have a liberal policy in regards to permit parking down there, so long as you're not obstructing traffic or parked on a hydrant or any other way that's considered dangerous. People can park down there that are volunteers without a parking permit. Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. On the heels of that, the Storm King School would like to also do a river sweep cleanup. And when I asked the village clerk why they wouldn't just do it at the same time as river sweep, this is going to be during the week. And so it's not a bad thing. The school is going to bring a group of volunteers, kids that are enrolled or young adults that are enrolled to come down there and work on cleaning up the environment. So I'm going to make the following motion and ask for adoption. The village clerk received this special event application from the Storm King School River Cleanup Event for Donahue Memorial Park in April 24, 2025. The insurance and application requirements have been met for this event. The village board will waive the application fee for the event. And chief, on that date, I would just ask that officers use discretion in enforcing permit parking as well. That's April 24th. What day is that? It's a weekday, I know, but if you could just make a mental note or take a note, April 24th, if people are down there volunteering, will be a little easy. May I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the Motivate 5K, which I think is either the second or third year that this has been held in the village. It's sponsored by The Chamber, I believe, and by Motivate Physical Therapy. They do it every year. They do a great job. So we received a special event application for the 5K event at the village firehouse and traversing municipal roads on Saturday, October 4th, 2025. The application is approved contingent on the appropriate insurance being provided. And the village board obviously waives the application fee for the event, a charity event. I saw.
What day, what day is it?
Chief, October 4th. I spoke to Eileen Hartman and Christine, Dr. Christine Stath this, this weekend, and they are planning on getting you the insurance correct, Doris? So they will take care of that. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next event is a event to be held at the firehouse. We received a special event application for a wedding shower at the village firehouse on Saturday, June 14th, 2025. The application is approved contingent on the appropriate village regulations being followed. And the village board will waive the rental fee for the event as it involves a village employee and family. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second wedding or what's going on?
Hold the sun.
All right. All right, congratulations, Dad.
Oh, I got one in here.
All right, do we, do we, do we, do we, do we take the vote?
We did.
We did? Okay, all right. Pavilion event. This always makes me excited because the pavilion is something that this board worked very hard and our village departments worked very hard to make happen. So we have another pavilion event. And this is also a special one because it involves a former village employee. So the village clerk received a special event application for a birthday party at the Donahue Memorial Park Pavilion on Sunday, June 22nd, 2025. The application is approved contingent on the appropriate village regulations are followed. The village board waives a rental fee for the event. The event is being held for one of our, I think it's fair to say, elderly, former village trustees, who I believe was a trustee for 20 years, Jim, Bill Fogarty?
I think it was 20.
This is a different one.
I'm sorry.
We passed that one last week.
You did that last week?
Yeah. This is, I thought you were going for an elderly trustee.
This is not an elderly trustee and he's still on the board.
Former trustee. I was like, wow, what happened?
All right.
You became persona non grata.
I'm sorry, because it didn't have a name on here, but yes, I missed that, Dave. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So yes, so the village board, since it's for an active trustee and family, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Why am I hung up on the Fogarty one? We did pass that, yeah. All right, wow, we're blazing through this. See, I finally, after four years of doing this, I finally figured out a way to run efficient meetings. Finally. Okay.
Just in time.
Just in. I know. So summer camp, summer camp update. So what I can say right now from the dais is this, is that the Cornwall Central School District has, have no available buildings this year, no facilities. None of the school buildings are available due to capital projects being conducted. So while those projects are ongoing, we were told that we could not use Lee Road Elementary School, nor could we use the high school, nor could we use Willow, nor could we use Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School. So we also had another curve ball, not really a curve ball, but we also had another consideration, which was the town supervisor is closing the pool this year. It's got to be, it's got to be fixed. It's been leaking water. That's chlorinated water that leaks down into the duck pond, into Ring's Pond, and it costs money. It's treated water that is wasted and seeps into our own aquifer, which is not a good thing. So he's made the decision to, to close the pool this year. They're trying to determine whether or not they're going to do a repair job on it or if they're going to have to do a complete rebuild, which will be lots and lots of money. So with no pool and with no facility that's being donated to us, we had to find another venue. We looked at doing it possibly on the grounds at Town Hall. That's a whole lot of considerations and issues there, including if you put tents up, which at a great cost to do that, because remember, we don't pay the school system to use it, to use their facilities. We wouldn't have a place if there was thunder and lightning, if the seniors were using Munger Cottage. There would be no place really to put the kids. So we're looking at some other options locally and close by. And I think we're going to have some exciting news to announce soon. I know the supervisor has mentioned this too. We can't get into details. We don't have a deal yet, but it will be local. It is going to be exciting. We're working on costs right now. It will be for six weeks. And the dates right now that we are targeting for this, because remember, our other option would have been just to cancel camp or hold it at Town Hall. The third option is what we're working on. The dates will be slightly adjusted left, which means camp would be, it's six weeks beginning June 30th and ending August 8th. So we normally start after July 4th. This time we'd be starting a week before July 4th. So July 30th, July, June 30th to August 8th, six weeks. We're looking to do a six hour a day camp. So think about that, parents. That's 30 hours a week, six hours a day. That is much more ambitious than anything we've ever done in the village. Our camps have always been 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The town has always done 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the village and town conjoin camps were 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We are looking to do 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So please, I know parents, if you're watching this or you talk to, you talk to somebody who mentions it, we're trying to keep the cost down as low as possible, but it's a six week camp, six hours a day, and we're hoping to be able to make an announcement within the week. So stand by, and I'm hoping that we can make an exciting announcement soon. All right, moving on from that, the only other item is DMV plate surrenders. I talked to the village department heads just to make sure we shore up what our policy is regarding our plates. We had an incident down in the city where somebody had taken a surplus vehicle that was no longer in the village's fleet and had one of our plates on a vehicle. So they avoided having to pay a toll. When that came back to us as a violation, we were able to quickly figure out that we did not have that vehicle in service anymore. So we didn't really have a policy on this because municipalities don't have to, but we've agreed as department heads that, that drive or maintain any of our vehicles in the fleet, that when license plates get changed out or we surplus or sell or graveyard a vehicle, that those plates will either be turned into DMV or they'll be destroyed. So this won't happen. Okay, that is all I've got, other than for your information. So here is a quick lineup of what's coming up. March 25th, which is tomorrow, here in the village boardroom, is a planning board meeting. And I think on the agenda is the Storm King Theater. Manny, how many items are on the agenda for that? Is that the only agenda item?
There are three items.
What are the other two? Do you know?
261 Shore Road and 314 Mountain Road. They do one in addition.
Mountain Road is an addition, but Shore Road, is that the subdivision?
That is the subdivision, yes. The 17th last subdivision.
Got it.
Is 314 Mountain Road Storm King School?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I imagine with the first two items on there, you're going to have a full house tomorrow. We need to be prepared for that. So I think there will be people in support of one of the projects and there may be some people that show up, because I've gotten a few phone calls in regards to the subdivision that might have some concerns. So let's just expect and anticipate that we're going to have a full house tomorrow. So as far as seating arrangements and things like that, I don't think it's going to be a raucous crowd. I'm not saying that.
It cannot be more than 116.
Manny? If I could, if I.
That's off the top of his脑袋.
If I could trust anybody in this room, make sure that we keep the fire code and keep it safe in here. All right, okay. Next item, okay, next item, moving on to this. April seventh is gonna be the reorganization meeting. So obviously, that is going to be my last day as mayor. My term, my my term in office expires at eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine on April seventh. And then the mayor-elect will be sworn in. The clerk is determining by checking with NICOM to make sure that when we need to do those. There'll obviously be ceremonial swear-ins that night at the meeting. Um, Mr. Mayor-elect, have you decided yet whether or not you're gonna compress or you're gonna keep this separate? You're gonna have a work session and a business meeting and the reorg?
Uh, right now, I'm gonna have the, we're gonna keep, we'll have three.
Business meeting also?
Yeah, you do. When you have the reorg meeting, it's, you also have a work session and a business meeting that month.
Yeah.
Oh, in the month.
In the month.
I thought you meant one night.
No, 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 no.
Oh, so reorg separate from business, uh, from work session also? Okay, because we did conjoin the work session one other time.
That keeps your, yes, we've done that. That keeps your reorg meeting nice and tight, because it's just basically pro forma stuff and then you can have a regular work session. Okay, alright, it's good to know.
So there's gonna, is, are you saying there's also gonna be a meeting on Monday the seventh? Or is that just gonna be for swearing in?
That's for the reorg meeting. They have a reorg meeting on the seventh.
Day one, reorg meeting?
Yes, correct.
Alright.
Then that would mean that the work session is the fourteenth? And that would mean, if my math is right, that the business meeting would be the twenty-first, is that correct? So you'd have seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, you got the trifecta. Alright, okay, so reorg meeting April seventh, seven PM, obviously in here. April eighth, which is the next day, which is a Tuesday, a fire, board of fire commissioners meeting will be here in the village boardroom at six PM, correct, chief or in-chair? Yes? Um, April tenth will be a ZBA meeting, a zoning board of appeals meeting here in village hall at seven PM. April fourteenth, obviously is the, it's on here, the village board work session at seven PM. April fifteenth, the planning board meeting at seven PM. And then obviously, we need to add, but April twenty-first will be the business meeting for the village board. And with that, that might have been my most efficient meeting ever. Under an hour, I think, just took me four years to figure out how to do it. Alright, with that being said, I am, I'm gonna, what?
You stole my public comment.
What was your public comment? Oh. Ah, I know, I know.
The worst meeting I've been under an hour.
Dave, you're killing it.
You're killing it, Dave. So I I just, I just wanna say this, I'm I'm kind of lucky because I remember um, Mayor Coin's last meeting and we were still holding meetings remotely due to COVID. So his final meeting was done online. So it's a privilege that we're not under that, uh, we're not under those lockdown conditions today that we can do this in public and I can say thank you to uh, to everyone. It's been six years on the village board, two as a trustee and four years as a mayor. It's been a privilege and an honor. Truly appreciate all of you, the department heads, um, in 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 the back. Thank you for what you do, you put up with me texting you at all hours of the day and night. Put up with my inane questions sometimes, you put up with me wanting something done yesterday and not today. Um, I truly, truly, truly appreciate it. Um, you've been a pleasure, pleasure to work with. Um, counselor, you and I have stylistic di- differences, just a little bit. However, I can say I have never once doubted your your legal view on something. You've been a pleasure to work with as well. Um, I truly, truly appreciate it. I've watched you from afar for a long time, um, because you've been here longer than me, but it's it's been a pleasure. And you know, as somebody pointed out the other day, it's a damn shame, I mean, it's crazy. Galeno's got two weeks to go and there's been no corruption charges yet. And I said, yeah, or no Article twenty-five. So I appreciate you for keeping me between the white lines. Um, so everybody from the front office isn't here, Doris, thank you, same thing. You've had to put up with me, I've had two great um, village clerks and and Jean Mahoney, who really kind of ran things for the first two years when I was just trying to figure out where the bathroom and the coffee machines were. Um, and Doris has had to pick up the slack as I started to round into the job and had to deal with me more, you know, being on 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 top of things as opposed to just leaving her to do her job and get things done. But Doris, I appreciate it, you got a great team too. Megan and Jacqueline and 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 Paul in the front office, Kathleen, when Barbara worked here, um, I thank you. I thank you for what you do. It is in a lot of ways a thankless job, I know, being the clerk, because you're constantly just having to handle things and keep track of things and I appreciate everything you do to keep me between the white lines too. Um, for the board members, um, I said some things this weekend, I wanna say, um, before I get to the board members, the the volunteers, and and that's Rick and the chief. Um, Manny, you get paid, chief, you get paid. I know you guys don't think you get paid enough, Mike, you get paid, Dave, you get paid too. But I appreciate you guys too, because you do this stuff and you put up with stuff and you show up and you do your job and you don't do it for money and you certainly don't do it to the accolade. So I I thank all of you. I'm gonna send out an all-employee email before I leave to everybody and just kind of, you know, say some bullet point thank yous. But lastly, the village board, um, Lori Beth, it's been a pleasure. Um, you were um, you were the top draft pick and probably one of my, one of my best decisions in bringing you on and certainly carried your weight here and earned your way onto the board via an election. Um, and I and I thank you and you've done a great job. Like I said this weekend, you've done a great job of absorbing things when you didn't know anything about it and when you had an opinion on something and knew something about something weighing in and and your voice carries weight. And I thank you. Bill, you and I came into this position, you came onto the board um, at the same time I did and I truly, truly appreciate one of the things that that, uh, while you and I may disagree on small items here and there, you've never been prone to histrionics or pounding the podium or things like that. You you make your points and you do it um, in an educated and intelligent and in a collegial fashion. And I appreciate that, so thank you. Um, David, again, as I said this weekend too, um, you are an icon and a legend around these parts and what you've done. You really, truly, truly are. And 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 I thank you because, you know, you don't, you don't know how much I did appreciate hearing the key fob in the door on weekends or late in the evening or during the day and knowing it was you. And it was always coming in to ask a good question or to bring information in or to weigh in on something. And I truly appreciate our talks and I respect you greatly. You're you're really what this is, this is about. You're the guy that's at a meeting every day that ends in Y. And I truly appreciate you and your wife who allows you to do it. Thank you. And lastly, the, I can't call him the deputy mayor anymore, the mayor-elect. Um, you know, Jim took a, uh, Jim was the deputy mayor in the previous um, administration and it was an easy holdover for me because um, I'm not the only person that thinks that his advisements and his guidance and his counsel are um, are worthy. And he's, he's become a sage advisor to me and this village is gonna be in very good hands with him at the helm. But more importantly, he's become a really good friend of mine. And I appreciate everything you've done, my man, because truly, the amount of stuff that I had the deputy mayor do when he was, and and get done and and do on behalf of the village, I truly, truly appreciate it, so.
Pleasure.
Appreciate everybody and thank you. And with that, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Lori Beth.
Um, well, uh, I feel, I feel extremely lucky to be able to have stepped my foot in the door here under you. Um, you're an incredibly strong leader and I I've been in awe as I sat here knowing nothing um, and and so appreciative that you took the chance on me. I'm I'm just a mom from the village, you know, and I.
You're more than that.
Well, I thank you and um, I guess got some big, you know, boots to fill, Jim Kane. And I'll be watching, because I've been watching you and now and and now it's you, so dazzle me.
Thank you.
I'll miss you, I'll miss you.
I'll miss you too. I'm not going anywhere. Um, William?
Uh, at risk of breaking the flow, I wanna talk about three village issues and then I have some comments, but.
Just get the three village issues.
Oh, well, first, just for my part, I wanna thank the entire village and everybody that I work with for their support and their trust in reelecting me. Um, EV chargers, uh, I I did check for a timeline on that and they're in the design phase and they're, they said several weeks till construction. I just told them to make sure that we do not do anything until we've had a chance to make sure that the DPW and that the board are aware of exactly how these projects are gonna look and where they're gonna go. Um, on the event form, Doris, I owe you a better copy because it's got those two little question marks in it that drive me crazy every month and I forget that I did a clean copy that I wanna give to you. Um, in the checklist, uh, and then, um, see, I forgot we were gonna be making little comments here, so I was writing all the little things I wanted to just cover off on. And then there's the Donahue Farm stuff, just there's like three things that uh, DPW chief was, um, superintendent was copied on, power supply, waste removal and concrete pads. And then a discussion that has to take place regarding milling and site access. So that's it for those comments. But for me, as you alluded to, uh, you and I have some fundamental disagreements about the nature of the world. And yet, when.
Not the village.
Not the village, exactly, not the bubble that encases this small place. Um, and when when we both were uh, due to serve on the board at the same time, we met and had a good discussion about how we were gonna conduct ourselves and and the collegial nature that we would bring to this board, having seen in in prior boards, uh, the opposite example from time to time, um, for various and no doubt good reasons. Um, but, and you've kept to that and I tried to keep to that, so it's been a great pleasure to work with you and you've made it uh, an easy role to take on without having actually served a public office before, except as a committee chair or whatever. And so, um, thank you for your time here and for your service to the village.
Thank you, Bill. David?
Um, first, congratulations to my teammates on the election. Um, I look forward to working with Jim, I'm sure we'll uh, be able to uh, continue our success that we've had in the village. I think we've done a lot uh, in the last four years and especially in the last two years. We've been able to accomplish a lot on behalf of the village and on behalf of the residents. I'm glad you're not going anywhere, Jim, because I know I'll need your advice from time to time, you know? You are the smartest people in the room, so.
What about that?
Wow, I know you are, so. But I'm glad that you'll be around and our friendship is important to 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 me and to my family. And so I look forward to the next two years and I hope you do what you wanna do in life and I know you'll succeed.
Thank you, David, I appreciate that. Jimmy? Or should I say mayor-elect?
Say mayor, mayor.
Yes.
Mayor-elect.
Mayor, that's correct. So first, I wanna congratulate uh, Bill and and Dave on your reelection. Well deserved, no one ran against you, um, I think that speaks speaks volumes. Um, with respect to my election, I just wanna thank the village residents um, for their support. I'm I'm humbled and and grateful for their confidence and their and their faith in me. And I look forward to representing them and serving, serving them. So thank you for that. Going to Jim here, um, some of you have already heard this, but I'll repeat some of it. And that is, um, Mark Edsel and I came to Jim in two thousand and eighteen to see if he was interested in in uh, running for the board. Um, I can't say Jim was, he wasn't hesitant hesitant about it, but thought about it. And um, I think Mark and I thought, you know what? If Jim gets on the board, it's at least a double, he's got a strong um, strong personality, he's got strong opinions. Uh, things will get accomplished. Well, you know, fast forward several years later, we thought initially we might have hit a double. Um, but we didn't realize that that double then turned into a, Jim was really rounding second base and and heading towards home. So from, I think from Mark Edsel's perspective and mine, and I keep in touch with Mark, we've now obviously determined that um, we hit a homerun in in convincing Jim to uh, to join the board. Um, he's, I I can check off the the number, the multitude of things that were accomplished on the board. And it wasn't just by Jim, it was the board getting behind him and him coalescing the board and getting us to agree. And for the most part, you know, with a very few exceptions, there were, there were disagreements. Not saying that there was a spirited discussion about items, but much was accomplished. I mean, you can start with the pavilion, the body warden cameras, the the, which I forgot about the other day, the uh, New Windsor EMS. Um, you know, there there's just so many things I can't name them all and they're they're great accomplishments. But I think what the, what the residents don't necessarily see all the time, they see some of it, but I think, I think the the great things, the attributes that Jim has and brought to to the dais here and brought to the village was his his openness, which I think most people understand that Jim would, Jim would speak to anyone about any any matter. And sometimes it had nothing to do with uh, the village. And in fact, it could be dealing with the country or the state or something out of the realm of uh, of the village. But he was always open, he was open to any member of the board with any, any, any item. Um, the second thing was transparency. I have to say that, you know, as soon as Jim took uh, took the position as the mayor, um, the emails were flying. So I I cannot say and thank him enough that um, I I always felt completely, fully informed on where, what we were doing, where we were going, and in many times, the explanation of why he was deciding to do something, um, which which was huge. Um, the, the other, the the third thing is, Jim was just focused on accomplishing things. He had a very aggressive schedule. Um, sometimes I thought, there's just no way we're gonna get to this. Um, but we did anyway. And I think, I'm gonna use his term and that is, he doesn't like dangling jumper cables, is that it? He doesn't, he wants to get things done and um, to his credit, uh, Dave and Mike and Manny and the chief, um, I know we pushed you guys, pushed you hard, but you responded and you supported him and you supported the board. So I appreciate that. And the last two things are, um, Jim's, he's, he's respectful to people. Uh, as I said the other day, that, um, you know, it didn't matter what stature, what position you're in. Um, he treated you the same, he absolutely treated you the same, which people appreciated. And lastly, I I say this, it's all, you have all those attributes, but the one, one that stands out to me is what I consider one's moral compass. So, you know, my my favorite um, wartime general is um, Herbert Norman Schwarzkopf, who was the uh, general US CENTCOM command during Operation um, Desert Storm in nineteen ninety-one. He's had many, many quotes. One of funny one was um, uh, going to war without France is like hunting without an accordion. Uh, so, but the, but the one, one of the ones he's famous for is, he said, um, God, I can't remember right now. Um, the truth of the, right, the truth of the matter is, you always know the right thing to do. The hard part is doing it. And I think Jim didn't suffer from that. I think his lens, during his four-year tenure on this, as the mayor, Jim's lens was one of what is best for the village, what is best for residents. It wasn't through the lens of politics, it's what is best for here. And that guided his, the the way he operated. And I truly appreciated that. And I think, and I think a testament to that was, he won the first election by three votes. And then he crushed it on the second election. And I think people realize that, that he's all in for the village. Um, so I truly, truly appreciated that. So because of those things, I I just have to say, I think you did just a fantastic job as the mayor. You accomplished much and you should be very, very proud as as well as your family. So thank you for your service, your teamwork, your foresight, your professionalism. And also thank you for the friendship. Uh, we became very, very close because we spent an enormous amount of time together and that will be enduring. So thank you and um, you will be long remembered here in the village as as a mayor. So thank you and we will see you around Mayberry.
You will. Thank you for that, Jim. And I think the two guys that are gonna. You guys are probably gonna miss me the most because I probably spent most time with them during the day and during the week are probably Mike and Dave, because I can, I can tell you, the nice thing about dealing with those two guys, if I called, ninety-nine percent of the time, they never sent me in a voicemail and they always, Mike goes, well, they they never sent me in a voicemail.
That's a good reason.
And they responded and all I had to do was say, Mike, meet me up on Mountain Road, Dave, meet me on the Boulevard. Um, I need you to meet me over here in town or whatever. And they always did that and I I truly appreciate that about you two, because I probably worked closer with you two than anybody else in the village in regard to day-to-day operations. So you're true professionals and and I appreciate it, so. Alright, with that being said, I I don't wanna belabor the point, so I'm gonna close out my last meeting here. So I'm gonna make a motion to close out the village board's business meeting for April twenty-fourth. Two, I'm sorry, thank you, Bill, jumping ahead, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Oh, you forgot to mention Mr. Nagal Cuddy.
Yes.
Good. So this is the.
You're gonna have new seating arrangements now?